Okay. Let's begin. This is the regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on July 26, 2023 at 7:30. Pursuant to section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by portantly posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the clerk of Princeton on July 21, 2023, and has been posted to the municipal website, Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by executive order number 292, in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meetings Protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics of Times and was filed with the clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the critical, on the official bulletin board of the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and ought to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics of Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the clerk of Princeton. Notices have also been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich? Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Here.
Mrs. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. So, excuse me, just my agenda. Well, we have we have two resolutions this evening. Well, actually, excuse me, the the end of the year report. Derek, do you want to say something about that?
Yes, sir. So, in accordance with the report that was reviewed last month, Steve has written a memo to the governing body. It addresses three issues. One would be the nonconforming or the implementation of the consolidated zoning ordinance, which it is in process, but it's always good to to bring that out. The other was the increase in height or possibly allowing houses that are in flood zones to increase their height or without getting a variance due to the rising base flood elevations from FEMA and the state of New Jersey. And then finally, our favorite, the nonconforming lot variance. We've asked that the council look at that and if a project meets all the bulk requirements, it should be approved administratively by the zoning officer. And that's the three items that we is forwarding to the governing body. So, if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them where Steve is here as well, so. Thanks.
Okay. All right, so we have two resolutions this evening. The first case number is Z22, Z23-360 66 Whitmer Court, Block 4601, Lot 18 in the R4 zone. The resolutions were in your packet. Does anybody have any comments or if done, does someone want to make a motion?
First, don't we have to approve the year-end report resolution?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Do we do that by individual vote? Karen?
Uh, yeah, since you've got a resolution, I guess the motion and a second and a roll call. Yeah.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that, Michael. All right, go back to the once again, the first case Z23, 23-360 66 Whitmer Court, Block 4801, Lot 18 in the R4 zone. And as I mentioned, the resolution was in your email and if someone has any questions, please ask. If not, if someone would like to make a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the second resolution is case Z22-270. Sacred Coffee Roasters, 300 Witherspoon Street, Block 6901, Lot 4 in the B1 zone. That was a long resolution and I think, I think I think we've got everything in there. So, has everybody had a chance to look at it? And if so, if someone would like to ask any questions you might have or make a motion?
But board members, I have a clarification that I would like to offer to the resolution. In several spots in the resolution, namely, it's page six, Derek's testimony, and pages 10 and 11, there's reference to manufacturing uses being prohibited, a prohibited use in all zones. What I want to clarify, it's prohibited in all zones in the former Princeton township. And that is where this property is located. And as you know, from prior applications, the ordinances, zoning ordinances have not been consolidated, so the board is used to applying the notices that are in effect for either the former borough or the former township, as the case may be. So, I wanted to add that so that it's clear in the resolution.
That's, that's fine. I have no problem with that. Board members, any questions? Okay, if someone would like to make a motion, I'll move to approve.
Oh, whoa, whoa, only, only those members now who voted against the approval, meaning they voted for denial, because that is what this resolution is now memorializing.
Yeah. Okay, so there are four people. Myself, Michael Floyd, Steve Schreiber, and who was the other? Sorry, I missed them.
Donna.
Donna.
Donna, so if someone, if one of those four would like to make a motion and another second it?
So, I'm I'll second it.
Okay. All right, Claudia, can you?
Okay, I'm sorry, who moved it?
Eve Schreiber.
Okay, so Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Nope.
No, he wasn't.
No, he wasn't.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
Donna?
Chairman Cohen?
Yes, and Donna, yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So, um, we have one application this evening. Let's see. Okay, it's there is no case number on here.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Would you, do you, can you give us the case number?
Claudia, do you have the file? I don't have the file in front of me.
Yeah, one second. Z23 366.
Okay. All right. Case number Z23-366 89 and 95 Cleveland Lane, Block 4.01, Lot 18 in the R1 zone. Derek, can you? Well, first, Karen, is every, all the paperwork in order?
Yes, the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay, good. Derek, do you want to summarize your memo?
Yes, sir.
Eric will just swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. The applicant's Ben Wind House LLC, owner and applicant, have replied for a use variance pursuant to NJSA 40,55D-70D2 to permit the construction of two-story addition containing 262 square feet on the first floor and 357 square feet on the second floor to the property at 95 Cleveland Lane. The lot contains two houses, 89 and 95 Cleveland Lane, and only one principal dwelling is permitted in the R1 zone in the former borough. The proposed expansion is considered an expansion of an existing legal prior nonconforming use. The subject property is located in the R1 zone in the former borough, subject to the use bulk regulations in accordance with 17A 227, 231, and 403 of the former Princeton Borough Land Use. The little history behind the nonconformance of this property, they had applied for a variance in approximately 2003 to add a garage. At the time, it required several setback variances. They, not this applicant, a previous owner, and they pulled the application in in the, combined the two lots, consolidated the two lots, which did not require any variances for the garage. And that was legal at that time. However, the definition of a lot was changed in approximately 2006 and it has a stipulation that a lot may be occupied by more than one principal building, except in the R1, R2, R3, and R4 zones in the former Princeton borough. So, the subject property is a nonconforming use. It's legal. The lot itself is not complying with regard to the impervious coverage. The maximum permitted is 25.5%. The existing is 25, or excuse me, 27.56%. And as I indicated earlier, the applicant is proposing to do first and second floor additions, and the intent of this is to provide intergenerational living on the site. The existing part of the one-story addition will be existing addition will be demolished and a new addition will be proposed on the first floor, which will expand the kitchen, add a powder room, and create an open floor plan connecting the existing dining room and a small elevator is proposed in the to provide accessibility to the upstairs bedroom. The addition features a full basement and the second floor addition will convert the existing two bedrooms into a master suite and the proposed plans reflect the deck and patio to the rear of 95 Cleveland. The items comply with the applicable bulk requirements and they were approved administratively because equal parts of existing impervious services were removed so that the level of impervious coverage remained the same. The proposed additions also comply with all of the applicable bulk requirements. The property does require a D2 variance, which is the expansion of a nonconforming use. It's due to the two structures on one lot where only one principal dwelling is permitted. As the board's aware, no variance or other relief may be granted under the terms of this section unless the variance or other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. The board should consider the following when analyzing this variance request. An applicant has the burden of proof to demonstrate that special reasons for the granting of variance, as well as the negative criteria. And special reasons include inherently beneficial uses that serve the public, such as schools, hospitals, public housing, where the, where the owner would suffer undue hardship if required to use the property in compliance with the permitted uses in the zone and where the use would serve the general welfare report, the proposed site is suited to the proposed use. Is particularly suited to the proposed use. That's the synopsis of my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address those.
Um, can I ask a question, Derek? Do they need a C variance for the impervious coverage?
No, because they're keeping the impervious coverage at the existing limit, so we've allowed, that's, we don't call that a variance. It's, it's not increasing the impervious coverage on site. So, what they've done with the patio was, was approved administratively. They removed an equal amount of impervious coverage so that the overall amount of impervious coverage on the site remain the same. But that's a good question. Thank you.
Um, before we begin, is Elizabeth Kim here?
Yes.
Elizabeth is, I believe, yeah.
I am here.
Hi, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, we'll swear you in too. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening?
Just to make, I gotta get my camera on, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Let's see.
There you are. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do. Thank you. So, this application was reviewed administratively by the, myself and the State Preservation Commission Chair. We made a site visit and reviewed the application submission drawings and after that review, we felt that this application, we had no objection to this application. The addition is no wider than the existing building itself. And in fact, part of the upper floor is actually narrower. So, visibility from the streetscape, we felt would not be impacted. There is some view from the side yards because there are driveways on both sides, one on the subject properties on the right side and then the neighbors on the left. However, there is a bit of landscape already that exists and we felt that there would be adequate screening and what else, whatever else would be visible would be, you know, minimal, even though it was seasonally buffered. We also felt that the addition and the features that they had added on the addition were appropriate and we appreciated that the height of the building also was much lower than the existing manseared roof that existed on the front of the building. We did have a few recommendations to your board, but overall, we felt that this was an excellent addition and we had no objections as stated. There is a new generator that's proposed on the side of the building and we were hoping that perhaps that could be placed on the rear out of the view of the public right-of-way. In addition, there were some information, there was information that was not included that had to do with the exterior clapboard material and things like that. We were hoping that that material would not be vinyl, that it would be something more authentic of a wood material that was resistant, more like boral. And also, there is tree compensation proposed for a row of trees in the back of the property and depending on the amount of trees to be proposed for compensation that we had recommended, if those could be placed in the back versus the front, only because we felt there was an adequate amount of planting already and the intent, obviously, of historic preservation is really not to screen the property and we felt that there was really nice landscape already there. And those are the three comments we had, so thank you for the opportunity for those review.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay. I believe I saw the applicant's attorney, Mr. Lattisia. Would you like to begin?
I do. Good evening. Hello, all. It's been a while since I've been before this august body. I hope your summer is going well. Tom Lattizio, attorney with Troutman Pepper, Hamilton Sanders, representing the applicant, Bond Woodhouse LLC, which is a family limited liability company and is the owner, as well as the applicant, for this variance application. Subject property, as was noted by Mr. Bridger, is identified as Lot 18 and Block 4.01 on the Princeton tax map. It is in the R1 zone and was previously subject to the Borough zoning code for the R1 district. Last summer, the applicant, who are members of the Louis Green family, purchased the property, which contains two principal single-family dwellings on one lot. The property is ideal for the family for several reasons, which we will explain shortly. The property has a unique history, as was indicated by Mr. Bridger, which creates the need for us to appear before the board this evening. Prior to 2003, two dwellings were each on separate lots. In 2003, the two lots were under common ownership and the then-owner desired to build a garage between the homes. The owner decided to consolidate the two lots into a single lot so that the garage would not require any setback variances. At that time, the borough ordinance, as Mr. Bridger indicated, permitted a lot to be occupied by more than one principal building. Therefore, the two principal dwellings and the garage were, was unauthorized use of Lot 18. However, in 2006, the zoning ordinance was amended such that two principal buildings or dwellings on a lot were no longer permitted in the R1 zone district. And the result is that the two principal dwellings on Lot 18 are today what is referred to under the law as pre-existing nonconforming use. And therefore, any addition to the homes, no matter how small, requires a variance. So, we are here tonight to request approval to allow what I would characterize as modest improvements and reasonable updates to the home located at 95 Cleveland Lane. This is the smaller home, Lot 18. The existing footprint of the home is less than 900 square feet and the total floor area is approximately 1,900 square feet. The existing first floor contains a living room, dining room, kitchen, half-bath, and stairs to the upper levels. The applicant proposes an approximately 620 square foot addition on the rear of the house. The footprint will increase by approximately 260 square feet and the second level by approximately 360 square feet. The improvements are intended to facilitate Ms. Ivy Lewis, who you will meet in a couple of minutes to age in place. The additional floor area will allow for an elevator and an updated kitchen with island and access to the rear yard. The second level, which will be accessed by the elevator or the stairs, will contain a primary bedroom, bathroom, and walk-in closet. The elevator and kitchen modifications are the primary driver for the increase in the building footprint and area as they cannot be built within the existing footprint without displacing other critical living space. The proposed addition and the improvements complies with all the zoning and bulk regulations as confirmed by Mr. Bridger. However, because this application proposes an expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming use, a variance pursuant to NJSA 40, 55D dash, I'm sorry, 2, stop, paragraph 2, is needed. I believe our presentation will clearly show that the criteria of the MLUL are satisfied for the zoning board to grant this D2 variance and approve the application. I will acknowledge on behalf of the applicant that we did receive for July 23, 2023 memorandum from Ms. Kim, the State Preservation Officer. And I'm not gonna get into a jurisdictional argument here. I'll put that aside. The, as Ms. Kim indicated, her herself, as well as the HP Chair, the HPC Chair conducted administrative review of the application and they have deemed it to be acceptable. We will address the three recommendations that Ms. Kim sets forth in her memorandum. So, I have three witnesses that will assist me in making the presentation. Ms. Casey, do, do we want to just swear them all in at once?
Sure, sure. Sure, who are your witnesses?
Okay, Ms. Ivy Lewis?
Yeah.
Mark Braheany?
Mm-hmm.
And Spatch Tran?
Okay. All right. If all of you would raise your right hand, can we see everybody on the screen now? Yes, we can. Do you swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I will call Ms. Lewis.
Thank you. I'm Ivy Lewis and I want to thank you for hearing my request for a variance this evening. I'm excited to be moving back to Princeton after a few years away. I lived here with my family from 2004 till 2018. My kids went to high school in the area and both of my daughters went to Princeton, as did both of their husbands, as well as my father. After living together in a pod during COVID, we were hoping to find a situation where we could continue the multi-generational living we enjoyed so much during that period. My older daughter and I couldn't believe our good fortune when we were able to find a property with two single-family houses on Cleveland Lane in this wonderful Western addition neighborhood that's walking distance to town. My daughter and her family live in the larger house at 89 Cleveland and I plan to live in the smaller house at 95 Cleveland. This property is conveniently located right next to my other daughter's home at 81 Cleveland. I feel so lucky to be able to live near my kids and my three grandkids. It's this grandmother's dream come true. This property presented an ideal situation for our family and I'm proposing to make improvements to 95 Cleveland that will allow me to live there for a long time. When we bought the property, we knew that it contained two legal homes on one lot but did not understand that the ordinance change meant that we would need zoning board approval to expand the house, even if the expansion was within the bulk criteria for the zone. The house sits on a relatively small footprint, but it has three steep staircases. The primary improvement I need to make to allow me to comfortably and safely age in place is to add an elevator in case I'm no longer able to negotiate the stairs. The existing first floor footprint is not large enough to also accommodate a private bedroom and bathroom, so I'll need the elevator to be able to move between the floors. Another change allows me to directly access a new deck from the same level as an updated kitchen at the back of the house that will be more spacious as well as better accessible for all ages. I'm also planning to update this older home with green and healthy materials and appliances. I think we have done all that we can to make these improvements with minimal impact on the neighborhood and the environment. We've spoken to several of our neighbors, including the neighbor next We've spoken to several of our neighbors, including the neighbor next door, the neighbor behind. And two of the neighbors across the street and none of them had any issues with our plans. Thank you for listening to our presentation tonight and I hope you will grant the requested relief. To allow me to make these modest improvements to the property. I'd so love to be able to age in place and live for many years to come with my children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you Ivy, I have no further questions of Ms. Lewis, she's available for questions from the board.
Our board members, any questions of Ms. Lewis? Okay, let's uh move on.
I now call Mark Braheany.
Good evening, everyone. Um.
Mark.
Do you wanna talk about my credentials?
Yes, let's let's begin with your credentials, please.
Uh I'm I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey. I've been in practice uh for about thirty-five years. I have appeared before um the Princeton Zoning Board on several occasions.
Excuse me, Mark, not to interrupt you, it's a great resume. We. Before we will accept you as an expert witness.
Thank you, Steve, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan. You're welcome, so uh. Mr. Braheany, maybe you can start by orienting the board uh as to the location of. Of the house that you're gonna be uh working on, as well as the uh proposed addition to the home.
Sure, sure, I can do that, uh do we wanna, can we do a screen share so I can walk everyone through our?
Uh slides. I think you should be able to to have access to sharing, is that correct?
Yeah, I think Kim's, Kim from my office is working that out for us.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Letizia, do you want these marked as exhibits?
Uh what I was thinking on Ms. Casey is maybe this could be a single exhibit.
Sure, sure.
Twelve slides.
Got it, okay.
Call it A one, alright?
Alrighty.
Okay.
So it's a great, um I mean, you've already heard a lot of good description by um Ms. Lewis, Mr. Letizia and Mr. Bridger. I'll uh just try to flesh out um a bunch of their comments as we go through uh the images that um we've prepared for you tonight. Um here you see, of course, a couple of pictures, the the picture on the left is the front view. Uh from the street, uh you can see it's a three-story structure with um you know, sort of pinched in third floor, uh tucked under the roof. And then in the back, you can see um the three three-story part in the background. Um the, in the foreground is a is the one-story piece that we are gonna be replacing. With an expanded first floor and also a new um a new second floor. In the immediate foreground, I'll refer to this later on this on the site plan, you can see a a bluestone patio. And uh landscape timbers that will all be removed, we're gonna reconfigure that that entire uh rear area. Uh next slide, please. Um this, of course, is the is the zoning map. And it it gives you the location where lot eighteen is on the north side of Cleveland Lane, uh very close to Great Road, Elm Road. Um uh that's immediately to the left. Next slide, yep. Here's uh the the zoning chart and as as mentioned before, all of what we are proposing to do complies with the bulk regulations. Um uh and we are simply asking for permission to expand the non-conforming. Uh condition with uh two houses on one lot.
And Mr. uh Braheany, can you just confirm about the impervious coverage?
Yes, the impervious coverage is shown where the the little cursor is. And you can see the limit is twenty-five point five percent, we are at now twenty-seven point five six percent. And we are going to stay at that limit, we're we're gonna erase some impervious coverage. To make way for our new uh bit of impervious coverage. And I can point some of those things out on the site plan, which I think is the next slide. Yep, so on the left is the existing site plan, I know it's very, the image is very small, so it's hard to read it. Um the um. Kim is blowing it up for us, that's great. So you can see that um the um smaller of the two houses, number ninety-five is is uh. Is shown there, it's the dark gray three-story part plus a lighter gray. Uh one-story piece in the back that we will be removing and replacing. And then further back from that is the bluestone patio that I referred to earlier. Um you can also see in the um side yard of the um. Attached to the to number ninety-five, a small side porch. Uh we will be removing that. Um and there's also currently an AC condenser there, we will be be replacing that. Uh you decide the site also has the uh an existing three-car garage that's sort of sits between the two houses. And then the larger of the homes is up on the top of the picture, um we are not proposing any changes to that structure. So if we slide over to the proposed plan. You can, I'll focus on what we're doing with number ninety-five. You can see the three-story part um where the cursor is now, that remains. And then in the back of that is a two-story addition. The ground floor of that addition is slightly larger than the new second floor of the addition. And the hatched area is the second uh second floor. Yeah, in back of that is a new deck. That will be on the same level as the first floor uh first floor plane. And then further back from that is a a very modest um uh new bluestone patio. And then I'll talk about um some of the things in the side yard. Uh for going on the left side of the house, going from front to back, you can see a new generator. Uh it is uh it is well out of the building setback requirement. It's actually well out of the uh generator setback requirement. It's twelve feet off the property line, the the required generator setback is only five feet. Uh coming back further from that is the is a new Bilco door. Uh that also complies with the rules that pertain to Bilco doors. Uh they are allowed to encroach a little bit into the building setback line inside yards. And then just next to the Bilco door are two new heat pumps. We're not putting back convention conventional uh air conditioning units, we're going with uh with heat pumps. And those also, in terms of their location, those also comply. Um the rest of the site, excuse me, I think I'll talk about. I do wanna address the um comments from Ms. Kim and the historic board. But I think I'll get further into the slides before I I talk about them. The next image, I believe, shows you the existing floor plans, yep. Um the floor plan to look at is the is the first floor plan, uh it's the image on the right. As Mr. Bridgers described, it's a it's quite a compact floor plan. Um more specifically, you can see that it is um side-loaded with the circulation on the right, there's an entrance. Small, small entrance foyer, then a hallway going to the back and also a stairs in that hallway. Um immediate, as you go all the way to the back, there is a very small powder room. There is also a washer and dryer on this floor, it's the only place that the house had room for a washer and dryer. Um the larger rooms on the on the left side are a living room in the front. Then in the back, in the next room is a dining room with fireplace, normally the living room would have the fireplace, but that's not the case here. And then beyond that is the one-story kitchen, it's quite tight, there's no room for uh um an island. It's more more like a galley kitchen, there's no room really for um anybody other than the 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 person who's preparing the food. And then coming back um from that, you can see the the rear patio that that exists that we will be removing. Um a couple of things I wanna point out about this floor plan is it does not have many of the things that we've come to expect in. In homes in Princeton, it doesn't have a study or a library, uh it does not have a mudroom. The the kitchen does not have an island, um it's it's a it's a very spare, uh I mean, it's fine, but it's very spare floor plan. Uh the next image uh shows you the second and third floor. Um and you can see on the second floor on the left, there are two bedrooms. Front and back, very, very limited closets. There is one bathroom with one sink serving both of those uh those bedrooms, so there is no real uh main. Bedroom suite with a main um main bathroom and and uh closets. Uh and then, of course, you see the 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 small hallway and the stairs that um go up and also go down. Then finally, on the third floor, there is a one bedroom. And there is a a bathroom up there as well, also a modest bathroom, uh there's a closet and then there's a mechanical space. So that's the exist, the setup of the existing floor plans, I think next we have existing elevations. Yep. So upper left, you can see the front, um. Uh and upper right, you can see the rear. Uh lower left and right are the side elevations and the the small one-story piece. Um is what we're removing uh along the on the back there. So let's go to the new proposed plans. Here on the left, you see our new basement. And uh because the house is so compact, we are going to be filling the basement with a lot of storage capacity. Um you can see uh um. All sorts of, you know, shelving units uh. And uh there's a there's a washer and dryer in the basement, that will be the main washer and dryer, there's a spare refrigerator in the basement. Um there's a slop sink, those are all along the front wall, uh as you go back. The there's a there's a closed-in closet, you can see the new elevator on the right. And then further back, there is uh more utility-oriented space with mechanical equipment and and some more shelving. But I think the, one of the key points here is that we do very much need an elevator. In this kind of a setup where there is so much functionality in the basement. Uh so that Ms. Lewis can continue to use the basement as she lives there, you know, throughout her life. So shifting over to the first floor plan. We are um rejiggering all the space. So that now there will be indeed a a small home office slash library, there'll be some bookcases. Sort of home, home printer and a desk. Um we are gonna be making that a more compressed space and then we're giving more square footage to the living room, which now will have the fireplace. And then beyond that, we have room for a a wonderfully expanded kitchen. That will have space for a uh a table, a buffet, some built-in cabinetry. And then, of course, the standard things you find in a kitchen these days, a a a modest island. Uh the usual appliances. Uh and then on the very back on the rear, there is a very modest sort of mudroom setup. Where there's a rear door, we have storage for coats, uh we have a broom closet, we have a bench for um sitting down and putting. Um taking shoes uh off or putting boots on. And then the very back, we have the new deck. And you can see that all of that stays off of the setback uh setback uh uh lines that are shown in the drawing. And then you go to the second floor. You can see that we've we've really taken over the second floor to be the, to entirely be a new main bedroom suite. Um the the toward the front of the of the of the floor plan, you can see a a small study. There's a daybed that can be placed in there, to the left of that is a new main closet. Behind that is a new main bathroom. And then yet, in the back, in our new addition space is a new bedroom. And again, the elevator is critical to connecting all of this from basement to first floor to second floor. And then the third floor. Um. Is still one bedroom, uh a more generous bathroom, a very small um exercise space. With where we show a pallet on uh bike. Um the elevator does not come up to this level because uh the roof pinches in too much to allow us to have the headroom to to drive the elevator up there. I mean, we could have gone for that, but I think it would have looked sort of um ungainly on the outside to create the box. That would have been required to accommodate the elevator. And I think our next slide shows you the um shows you the elevations, yep. Um. Front left is is at the top left is the front elevation and that's being, then there are no changes to that elevation, in fact. Because our addition does not uh and in the back does not uh is not wider than the body of the house. In this view, you won't really see what we have built on the back. Now, I know when you look at the house from an angle, you might be able to pick out some of some of what we've done, what what we will have done. Uh next image to the right is the rear elevation and here there are substantial changes. Um the the first floor is shown with a triple window at the kitchen and then a new entrance door with a small. A small little roof, protective roof over it and then pinched in above is the new mass um main bedroom. Both of those things, though, sit well below the three-story structure in the front, so we're we're really trying to be sensitive to what the. Um existing architecture is and the sort of hierarchies of of the existing architecture. And then uh the the lower images are the side elevations, um and again, you can see how the 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 um. The our addition sort of steps down from the main body of the house. Um let's see what else to say, I think that's it about this image. Our next image, I believe, is uh yes, a an aerial view. So here I'll I'll talk uh address the um the uh historic uh comments. Um and I'll take them in reverse order. Um the trees that we are removing is are shown as a small um green hedgerow. Those trees are in bad shape, uh the Princeton Arborist agrees that they are good candidates to be removed. Um we are proposing eh per his recommendation to eh um to plant five new trees on the property. Um we acknowledge Ms. Kim's comment that the front is pretty well packed and I'll I'll show you a photo later, but. Uh it's already packed with vegetation, so there's no really good room for new trees there, we will deploy these trees in the back. But along the property line with the closest neighbor. Um probably a little back from where Kim's running the cursor so that we can provide uh some bit of screening for both property owners. Um. The next thing I'll talk about um is the second comment uh having to do with the siding. Uh we are definitely not doing vinyl siding, uh we will be doing uh hardy plank siding. Uh the house already has hardy plank on it. Um in fact, also, the larger house has a mixture of hardy plank and wood cedar siding. Um and until we sort of pointed that out, um people didn't realize that it was a a mixture of the two, the two sidings, they they really look. Uh quite quite similar. So we will be staying with that theme, it would be, we will be using um hardy plank siding, we will be using some boral. Um for some of the exterior trim features on on the house. And then last, the generator, um we are proposing that the generator stay in the side yard. Um you know, my firm has installed a fair number of generators at this point for clients. I, all of them have been located in the side yards and there are a number of reasons for for that typical location. Um one, it it leaves the rest of the property uh where we put generators. Uh free for the use by homeowners, typically the side yards are where the generator has the. Uh readiness uh connection to the gas supply and also the radius connection. Uh and that's, that is the case here, the radius connection to the electric system in the basement, to the electrical panel. And as I said earlier, we are complying with all of the uh gen- generator setback requirements, we're we're more than complying with them. Um so that's that's our our uh sort of. our uh sort of uh case on the on the generator. Like, I think, uh you know, we haven't uh drawn in here the addition, but I I don't think, I think you can tell that the addition on the rear uh is is gonna be pretty inconspicuous. Um if we go to the next slide, the last slide. Um two, these are two images from the front, as you can tell. You can see how much vegetation is at the front. And, you know, granted, this is a full, fully leafed out uh trees and bushes. You can't even see the back backside of the uh of the of the ha- of the uh structure that's currently there. There you can't even see that that one-story structure, and I don't think you'll be able to pick out our new two-story structure either. So a few general comments about the project. Um as as um uh mentioned a few times earlier, this is all designed so that Ms. Lewis can uh can have a wonderful family life in this home uh with her her uh daughters, sons-in-law, and grandchildren. Uh it is designed, the project is designed to allow her to age in place. That's a key part of the elevator. Uh that's a key uh the elevator is a key part of that. Um and it is also designed uh for her to uh live a very healthy life in this in this building. We will be using products that are uh very much sustainable uh products that do not uh give off B O Cs. We are going to be um using um lambswool insulation in the walls. We are going to be using a high-efficiency uh HVAC equipment. As I said, we'll be using heat pumps, um so we will not be um I think we'll we won't be burning any fossil fuels in this building. The only thing that will be connected to natural gas is the generator. Um with the uh heat pumps, we will we will be creating a very tight envelope, a very tight thermal envelope um with our project. And so we will uh be including fresh air uh introduced through the mechanical system. And as part of that, we'll be doing energy recovery units to make sure that everything is run with a great deal of energy efficiency. So, that's that's the rundown on the project and what we think is a a pretty exciting project in terms of accommodating um Ms. Lewis and um and a a very healthy um uh life to be lived for a number of years in this this house. So, any questions?
Board members, any questions?
Is the house occupied now?
Um Ivy, you're not living there now, correct? There's there's no furniture in it. So the answer is no.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I I was talking. I just forgot to unmute.
I have a question about the placement of the generator. I hmm I wonder. I have an idea of why it might be good for it not to be on the side, thinking about whether it would be disturbing to neighbors, but I wondered what um Ms. Kim's thought was about that. Was it the visuals, maybe?
Yes, it was the visuals, really the view from the public right of life. That was where my comment was coming from, but um if I could just address Mr. Brahaney, um I do appreciate that you looked at those three comments, and um I appreciate the fact that you um you understand that the landscape that that the front is pretty well landscaped already and that you look for alternate locations. And um that you, and I understand the placement of the generator. There really isn't that much other location on the side because I see that you've got the heat pump and you've got the um the Bilco doors, and and I don't remember if you've got some AC units, but um you explained why the option was difficult to move it in the back or even slide it in the back on the side jar. Um but um as um Ms. Coulson has talked about, sound sometimes is an issue. You know, the noise generated, so I mean, I'll leave that up to you to address that. So, thank you.
I can say one quick thing about the um the neighbor uh that's closest to the generator. I believe their garage is on that side of their house. And also, um there are very few open windows on their home. You know, on that side of their house.
Generators are pretty loud, you know, and the and the farther away they can be from other people, I think the better, but.
Well, that's that's true. When they're operational, they 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 are a little bit loud. Um you know, we're we're doing the best we can. We're we are way more off the sideline than is actually required. We're we're twelve feet off. The code only requires five feet.
I think the noise generated by the generators is really minimal. They they generally run for fifteen minutes a week just to test.
Hmm.
And when they're
They're actually being used. I mean, that that's the idea.
Exactly. Uh did you consider maybe doing some low planting around the generator to screen it from the street?
We we could, we could do something that that would, you know, be of that ilk.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's keep going.
All right, uh I now call my last witness, Spatch Tran.
Good evening, everyone. Do you like to uh?
Yes, uh you've been sworn. Yes, let's start with your qualifications, please.
So my name is Spatch Tran. I'm a planner and associate at Phillips Price Greigle Laney Hughes uh based out of Hoboken. Uh I have my master's in city and regional planning from the Blaustein School at Rutgers University, graduating in twenty seventeen. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and also credentialed uh by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have appeared as a planning expert in various municipalities in the state, including in Woodbridge, Springfield Township, Hoboken, Teaneck, Englewood, and others. This is my first time before a board in Princeton, though.
I offer Ms. Tran as an expert in land use planning.
Uh board members, I don't have any issues uh with this app with this uh witness. I would recognize her as an expert in the field.
Thank you. Uh so Ms. Tran, let's start with you just describing the scope of your um involvement with this application.
Certainly, I was asked to review the appropriateness of this variance request from a planning perspective. I did uh inspect the site in the surrounding area and reviewed all of the application materials. I also reviewed the Princeton's uh master plan, both uh the nineteen ninety-six master plan and subsequent reexamination reports from two thousand and one, two thousand and seven, and twenty seventeen, as well as your official zoning map adopted in twenty twenty-two.
And can you uh provide the board uh with your findings, saying conclusions, and the reasons uh to support?
Certainly. So first, I'd just like to um give a brief contextual description of uh this site and the surrounding area. This property is just under one acre uh in area. It is within the R-one residential district, which permits one-family dwellings as well as parks and playgrounds. A number of accessory uses are permitted, including accessory dwellings, but those are defined as having two rooms, and um certainly, this house uh does not qualify as that. This property is located um between Elm Road, which is to the west, and Lafayette Road to the east. Uh as was mentioned, there are two residences on the site, the larger residence to the north at eighty-nine Cleveland and the smaller at ninety-five Cleveland. Um prior to the consolidation of these two lots, ninety-five Cleveland, the smaller home uh was actually on an undersized lot. It was less than twenty thousand square feet, which is the minimum requirement for this zone. Um and in consolidating them, the property is now uh approximately forty-two thousand square feet. So it certainly uh is is accommodating of the two dwellings at this point. There's also the three-car garage, two driveways on the site. One goes to the garage and one uh you can see in the left photo on your screen, um which does not go to a garage, but is just on the on the south side of the property. Um I'll also note that there are uh there is a an additional uh two-story addition at the rear of the larger home currently. Um it's much larger than area in area than the proposed two-story addition. The garage is also two stories um in design. And again, there are patios um at the rear of both dwellings. Uh as I mentioned, this is a single-family neighborhood. All of the uses surrounding it are single-family. A lot of the landscaping um is similar to what you see on this site, and the setbacks are very similar to what you see on this site. Uh I won't go through the proposal again because the architect did a great job describing it. Um and so I'll just launch into the the variants at hand. Tonight, we're requesting a T D two variance, which is for an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use. That is a a use that was uh made non-conforming, uh but was legal at the time that it was uh uh put into that condition. And so by expanding this second dwelling, the D two variance is required. As Mister, as your zoning officer noted, um in two thousand and six, uh the definition of a lot in the zoning ordinance uh was amended and language was added that uh allowed more than one principal dwelling except in R-one, R-two, R-three uh and R-four zones. So by that definition, this second dwelling was made non-conforming. Now, for a T D two variance, the proofs are a little bit different than uh what's required for a typical D-one variance, a u- a typical use variance. Uh instead of considering whether the non-conforming use uh should have been granted in the first place, we accept that this is already uh existing on the site. Instead, the special reasons in support of a D-two should demonstrate that the proposed expansion would minimize this non-conformity and to make it more acceptable in its particular setting. And we're also uh required to address the negative criteria as is typical. In terms of the proofs, um I think that uh you know, I I made clear previously that this was uh uh the second dwelling was permitted um when the lots were consolidated. Um and now this expansion is requiring uh this D-two variance uh as a result of the ordinance uh definition change. The residents' uh personal reasons for wanting this expansion are quite good. Um they are allowing her, these the improvements are allowing her to age in place over the long term and stay close to family. And I would even assert that some of her uh choices in the addition have been uh very uh noble and good for the uh society at large uh in in the sense of her trying to achieve a healthy home by using sustainable and energy-efficient materials, which are, uh I believe that in my experience, she is going above and beyond what is typical or what is required. Now, the question of is whether this expansion of the non-conforming second dwelling will support the public welfare and if it will make this second dwelling more harmonious with its surroundings. I believe that the several purposes of the municipal land use law uh support this application. Purpose A is to guide the appropriate use or development of all land in the state in a manner that will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Purpose I is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civ- civic design and arrangement by modernizing an existing site. And purpose J is to promote the conservation of historic sites. Uh and also to promote conservation of energy resources and valuable natural resources. Um first, I'd just like to uh reiterate uh what Ms. Kim uh stated at the beginning of this hearing um that they that her office found that this expansion um was quite appropriate. Um although we know that the project is not uh currently within a historic district, we um we we believe that this project is very uh contextual with the architecture of the existing homes um and reflects the historic nature uh of the property. Some of the comments uh from her letter are in support of this uh building. I I will just touch on a couple of them. Um her letter stated that the improvements will not impact existing street-facing building facade um since the uh demolition addition and alterations are proposed on the side and rear of the house. She also stated that the increased building size and height of the addition, uh although it will be visible from the open driveways, uh there are a substantial number of plantings on the current and neighboring property that will help screen most of the addition. And she also stated that uh her office appreciated the scale and proportion of the addition to the historic house. And she found that uh these features were compatible with the historic house, property, and streetscape. Um now, this expansion, as I mentioned, has some societal benefits in terms of using sustainable materials um and trying to achieve a high level of energy efficiency. Um I believe that goes back to supporting purpose J of the municipal land use law. This will be a healthy home, and I think it speaks to the owner's commitment to making this expansion a net positively, a net positive on the environment. Um the expansion also allows the resident to age in place. Uh as Mr. Brahaney uh testified, the elevator um is i- installation of the elevator is necessary uh to allow her to age in place, and the expansion uh can accommodate that elevator and the other features of the home while modernizing other areas. Um the deck, uh the the access to the deck is also a flush opening, and um that allows accessibility over time for the resident. So I believe that this aspect, um these aspects of the addition will make this second dwelling more suitable in its location. Um as I mentioned earlier, uh this lot is currently forty-two thousand square feet approximately. Um and so the two, uh the second dwelling um can be accommodated on the site. The minimum lot area for this zone is twenty thousand square feet. These two dwellings are uh perfectly well-suited for this property. Um and I believe that the addition does not uh cause any extra getchment. Um density is not increasing, nor is coverage. Um and so I think that the lot itself can accommodate the expansion. As I also mentioned, the uh the front yard is typical in this site. Um the rear yard depth uh is quite substantial. Uh it's over a hundred feet. And at the rear, as you um may have noticed on the aerial photo, it's there's quite a lot of uh uh landscaping along the rear lot line, which provides a visual buffer from the neighbor to the rear. Um I I I really believe that the architects have done uh an excellent job designing this uh addition to fit in nicely with the neighborhood and also with the other improvements on the site. The addition is only two stories, similar to uh the other addition on the larger house. Um I believe that it's actually less visually intrusive than that other addition. Um and part of the reason is the dense landscaping in this front yard and the side yards uh that at least on a seasonal basis, um block really blocks the view. I mean, you really can't see the rear of the house in the images that you're looking at right now. Um and even in the wintertime, uh because of the location at the rear, it's still not uh very visible. And the proportions are are quite good on the site. It's much eh the the second-story addition is smaller than the main house. Um but it just really fits in very well. In terms of the negative criteria, there will be no substantial detriments to the public good. Uh again, thinking of visual detriments, there will be none. But also in terms of lot coverage and drainage, there will be no detriments as the lot coverage is maintained uh despite so sort of the rearrangement of where that coverage is located. Uh there are no parking-related uh issues or detriments. There's no density issues to this expansion because all of that is remaining the same. In terms of uh impairments to the zoning ordinance or the master plan, In terms of impairments to the zoning ordinance or the master plan, there will be none. I did look at your master planning documents. There are various goals and that were listed in the nineteen ninety-six master plan that I think are certainly supportive of this expansion. One goal was to encourage the use of sound urban design and energy-saving principles in new construction. Another was to preserve and protect natural resources to encourage historic preservation of historic buildings and sites. And also to provide for the housing needs of the elderly and handicapped. And while that doesn't apply to the resident today, it's certainly an aspect of aging in place. Another goal was to ensure that new housing does not have negative impacts on the environment or burden infrastructure, roads, or impact quality of life. And finally, maintaining the character of residential neighborhoods was a goal in your master plans. And I believe that the character is definitely maintained. Lastly, there was some discussion in the reexamination reports about providing housing for seniors. And while those plans were more relating to larger multifamily developments, this on a small scale does support the needs of aging in place populations and can support that goal as well. So in in summary, this this project, I believe, is is perfectly appropriate and makes this non-conforming use more suitable in its location, and there's no substantial detriments to the public good or impairment of the the zone ordinance or the master plans. Happy to take any questions.
Board members, any questions of Ms. Tran? Okay, Mr. Letizia, we after, if you'd like to say anything before we go into, we open up the public portion of the hearing.
No, not at this time.
Okay. We'll now open the public portion of the hearing. If there is anybody in the ordinance who would like to speak, please raise your hands on the screen. And Claudia will bring you in.
Take down the screen share, please.
Excuse me? Well, now we can see you better, Stephen. Claudia, is there anyone indicating they'd like to speak?
There are no hands.
Okay. All right. Hearing, not seeing anyone like that would like to speak, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Letizia, would you like to make a comment before we go into executive session?
Sure. I'll make it brief. I think this is a fairly straightforward application. The only, again, the only reason we're here is because of the historical change in the ordinance. This project is not changing the nature of the use. It's still a single-family home. We're just trying to make it a more modern home, more self-sustaining and to enable the owner to age in place. And I mean, again, because of what has occurred in the history of this property, any expansion, even if it's a hundred square feet, would require a hearing before this board. And it's just the nature of the law. You know, I'm not, I'm not being critical. But I I think the record is very substantial that what is being proposed here supports the grant of the variance. We meet the special reasons, and there are no negative impacts to the public nor substantial impairment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. So we hope you agree. And grant Ms. Lewis's request for variance. Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, we're going to executive session now. Board members, any comments, questions, anything we'd like to discuss? If not, if someone would like to make a motion?
I have a question. Maybe Derek can answer it. I'm just curious, but this, could these two houses ever be separated in the future? I mean, if certain circumstances changed and the the family moved out of town or did something like that, could new owners separate the houses?
I mean, a subdivision will require a number of variances. It could be condominiumized and sold as a condominium, you know, regime of ownership.
That was, that was actually, I I was on the board and I didn't realize it was two thousand and three. But I was on the board when this lot, this whole property came up for discussion. And that was exactly what they said. This, this could be a condominium and and basically dealt with this one property with two owners. The issue was the garage. That was the problem. The garage basically was on, would have been on the other property, so.
Well, I support the proposal. I think, you know, it's everything wanted to be without changing the character of it. But I'm just curious about the long term because circumstances do change. People do move and sell and things like that. But I don't see that there's anything we can do about it. Excellent. So I support the project.
Board members, any other questions? I think this is a very well-done addition. I think it's going to blend in very well with the existing neighborhood as well as fit well with the new, with the existing home. And and I do like this. Okay, any other questions or would someone like to make a motion?
I move we accept the proposal, and I'm satisfied that the generator can stay where it is.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, any discussion of the motion, any comments? The only thing I would like to add is along Stephen's lines, the the generator, as far as I'm concerned, is fine, but I would like at least the applicant to consider a little landscaping in there, which can be reviewed by our zoning officer, I believe. That was it. Is that okay with Stephen?
Are you suggesting that as a condition or?
Well, I, it's a suggestion. I guess I'd like to make it a condition that they that they do some landscape screening for the generator. Is that all right with you, Stephen?
Yes, absolutely.
And Michael, that's okay with you?
Yeah, it's okay with me. And I'm phrasing this question. Generators haven't gotten any taller, so it's still a pretty low height profile.
Right.
So so I'm I'm fine with the generator, especially all the how they've come in, you know, below the bulk standards. There's, you know, there's so much that's been given with this application or, you know, been real sensitive. So the generator is kind of a low-profile thing.
And they're in the enclosures to provide some noise baffling.
Yeah. You know, if the applicant is okay with it as a condition, then fine. But if they're not, I'm I'm not insisting on a condition of, you know, some type of screening.
Yeah, that would be my question is we, if if they're compliant with all the setbacks, we don't typically ask for additional screening as a requirement, maybe a recommendation, right?
Okay. I mean, we could suggest it.
I mean, I'm all for it as a very strong recommendation. But, you know, just.
We'll, we'll definitely consider the recommendation. I can, I can tell you that. Very good.
Okay, so we have a a motion, a second and a recommendation. And Claudia, can you call the roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum? Harlan?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very nice, very nice addition. Enjoy the property.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good rest.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, Kim.
Okay, I believe that's it for the evening, so we are adjourned.
Let me ask a question, Steve.
Yeah.
Before you adjourn completely. And it's a question for, if she's still here, Ms. Kim and and Derek. Is there any discussion about the town making some decisions on recommended historic preservation districts that aren't historic, you know, Mr. Letizia kind of hinted at the fact that, you know, jurisdictional issues that aren't jurisdictional. Because historic, I think he meant historic preservation districts that are recommended. And there seems to be a lot of them around town.
So, I mean, I can address that because I know that Mr. Letizia has mentioned that on several applications that he's represented. But as you know, Ed Schmier, who is HPC's attorney, does not agree with what he says. Otherwise, we wouldn't have reviewed any of those applications. So I believe it's two minds not interpreting the the requirements of the MLUL according to the master plan. And as you know, the master plan is being revised. And the list is getting longer, whether it's going to be adopted or not, but but I I believe what Mr. Letizia is concerned is, he says, he would like to see a list that actually lists every property by address and lot and block or some type of delineation of a district. And the way the borough had done it was different than the township. So obviously, these properties that he's been talking about have been boroughs, and it's been a little bit looser in some occasions where we'll talk about it'll be east of the central business district that goes to Jug Town. But he'll say, but it's not listed. But to me, if it's on Nassau Street, then, you know, it's between central business, I mean, central historic district to Jug Town. So I think that he's looking for something more finite than what's actually present on the the current master plan historic elements. So we are working with that. We have defined things more by geographic limits and lots and blocks, so it's not questions. But I think that there times, let's say, that you look at the Eating Club, which is the new Prospect Avenue Historic District. You know, there was objection to, oh, that eating club is not in there. Well, you know, that obviously is not true. You know, it wasn't him. It was, it was the applicant that they were, their attorney was saying that, well, it's not really in the district. And it's like, well, it is in the suggested district because it's called the Eating Clubs.
It's a suggest.
It's a suggested, that's correct. And and, you know, with the suggested according to MLUL, it's anything that's listed in the master plan elements that can be reviewed as a courtesy review by HPC, but they're not required to fill out an HPC application or any fees associated. But HPC does get an opportunity just to provide their comments and present it to the Board of Jurisdiction. If it was just something that needed that didn't need to go in those boards, HPC does not review that. Just like if there's a permit that comes in, HPC does not review those suggested districts only if it elevates to an application that either is a minor site, a zoning board or a planning board, that they would have an opportunity to just, you know, put their comments in. And and, you know, for the most part, like for this one, I would feel that it's a benefit for the applicant to hear a positive review by HPC.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Quite, quite honestly, I would, my question is more towards what does the future hold for these recommended districts? Is there discussion with the mayor and council and the planning department on making some decisions? If there's anything you can say. Because I wasn't going to raise that regarding this application. I was going to raise it after this application, if Mr. Letizia didn't say anything about it. You know, I just, I just know we're seeing applications that, oh, it's in a recommended district. Well, is there discussions on when we're gonna decide the town name?
As far as if it's going to be, if it's going to go from a recommended, a suggested district to
Yes.
a true district.
Yes.
Right.
So obviously, that is the intent. However, it has to be a consultant. It can't be by staff or HPC. We just don't have that type of manpower to do that.
Okay.
So like, let's say the Willsman Jackson Historic District. We actually hired a consultant and we were actually I actually, the governing body was encouraged by by other people saying that this, to them, has always been a district and they feel that it should be considered. So obviously, the study was made. We sent out a RFP, but we did not do it. We worked with the consultant when they brought in the report. And any designation or recommendation has to come before HPC and that they would make their recommendation or non-recommendation to the planning board and council. So I mean, we just don't have the manpower to be doing that kind of work. But so you see that list and let's say the the Club Row, the Eating Club Row, that was a suggested district and that was actually charged by the Prospect Foundation. You know, so they were the ones that did that and come to HPC to make that recommendation.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Good comment, Mike. Okay, if there are no other questions, comments, we'll call it wrap to the evening and see you all next month.
Thank you.